I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's a workshop of the Oceanside City Council for March 2, 2022. Roll call, please, Mr. Navarro.
Mayor Sanchez.
President.
Deputy Mayor Keim.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Weiss.
Here.
And Councilmember Rodriguez is not here today or is running late.
Thank you. We're going to begin with Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise, join me. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and we have a single item plus public comments at the end. And that item is a workshop on providing direction to commence proceedings and prepare materials necessary to form a Public Safety Services Community Facilities District within the city of Oceanside. We're going to begin with a report by Assistant City Manager Michael Gossman.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Michael Gossman, Assistant City Manager, here today to receive direction from council on the formation of a Public Safety Community Facilities District in the city of Oceanside. Some background as to how we got here. On February 6, 2019, council updated a policy to allow for the formation of these districts, these Public Safety Services Community Facilities Districts. And then in May of 2020, City Council approved the Alta Oceanside Project, a 309-unit mixed-use development proposed on North Coast Highway, which is now under construction. The city and the developer negotiated a condition of approval that requires the developer to participate in the formation of a Public Safety CFD that would ultimately be applied to other projects citywide that would be annexed into the district. So what is a CFD, in particular, a Public Safety CFD? A CFD would provide a financing of ongoing public safety services, including police and fire. New development projects meeting certain parameters would be conditioned to annex into the newly formed CFD. And then a special tax would be levied on property tax bills on these new development projects to provide an ongoing revenue source dedicated to funding of public safety services. Why a CFD? Residential development boosts economic activity and helps address the current housing shortage across the region. However, projects also come with increased service demand requests for the city, namely public safety. The tax revenue from new residential development has not kept pace with the demand for public safety services. For example, we've seen increases in the fire department. Every fire unit within the city is categorized as having a high workload, that is, over 2,000 calls per year. And over 50% of those units are categorized as having a very high workload, that is, over 3,000 calls per year. In the police department, we've seen an 11% increase in 911 calls between 2018 and 2021, and a 4% increase in calls for service between 2018 and 2021. So the city used the services of DTA, David Tossick and Associates, to perform a tax rate analysis in order to estimate the annual public safety cost to the city for each new residential unit. The methodology they used is that they reviewed all incident data for police and fire. They calculated costs by land use type per residential unit based on police and fire's gross budgets. They built in assumptions of taxes received for each residential unit, and they calculated the CFD special tax rates by land use type. The tax rates that they came up with were, on an annual basis, for single-family or duplex residents, $376 a year; multifamily residents, $417 a year; and then assisted living and skilled nursing facility units of $339 per year. The rates include annual administrative costs, and they also increase each year by the CPI for the San Diego region. The CFD would consist of two zones, A and B. Staff recommends that any future residential developments over 16 units in size that meet the following criteria be annexed into Zone B of the CFD: projects which are subject to a general plan amendment, necessary to accommodate residential uses, mixed-use projects proposed on commercially zoned land, including projects proposed in the downtown zone, such as Alta Oceanside, residential projects exceeding base density allowances, and assisted living and skilled nursing facilities of any size. The above criteria is recommended because the public safety impacts of development projects meeting these thresholds have not been accounted for or addressed within the city's long-range planning documents, including the adopted general plan. Residential units that are subject to a recorded affordability agreement with the city would be exempt from the CFD. The first project that would be annexed into Zone A of the CFD is Alta Oceanside, currently under construction at 1015 North Coast Highway. As I mentioned, this is 309 units, 26 of which are affordable. This project would be subject to special tax rates for Zone A outlined in the Rate and Method of Apportionment, that is, the tax rate analysis, and agreed upon as part of the condition of approval. Next steps to formation. Should the council direct staff to proceed with forming the CFD, the following steps would be taken. We would finalize the Rate and Method of Apportionment, that is, set tax rates. We would receive a petition from the property owner at Alta Oceanside to form the CFD. The council would adopt a resolution of intention to establish the CFD and designate future annexation areas. We would record a boundary map of the CFD and future annexation area. We would hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution forming the CFD and calling an election to approve the Rate and Method of Apportionment. We would hold that election, and then a resolution would be adopted certifying those election results and introducing an ordinance authorizing the levy of the special tax. That sounds like a lot, but it's basically two more meetings that we would have in order to make that happen. So that really concludes my presentation. As I mentioned, staff recommends that the City Council provide direction to staff to develop the ordinances and other materials necessary to form the district within the city. I'm here with Jonathan Borrego, our Deputy City Manager, Andrea Ress from DTA who performed the tax rate analysis, and I believe Brian Forbath from the city. No. But we've got John Mullin, a very competent attorney, that will be able to help us with any legal questions. All right, so I'll take a seat over there and then be available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gossman. Do we have requests from the public to speak on this item?
Yes, we do. We have one speaker, Kelly Batten.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Kelly Batten, and I am here lobbying on the behalf of the Building Industry Association of San Diego. We have also sent a letter in opposition to the CFD that you should have received in your email earlier this week. The building industry of San Diego is committed to promoting homeownership, especially for middle-income families. Establishing a mandatory community facilities district for services in the city of Escondido makes it even more likely to achieve middle-income housing by charging potential homeowners an additional tax for services already accounted for in local sales and property taxes. We all need to do our part to ensure a healthy housing market which supports healthy communities. Adding burdensome regulations like the CFD adds to the cost of housing, making homeownership unattainable for more San Diego families. The BIA respectfully asks that you do not support the CFD for services in the city of Oceanside. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other requests to speak?
We have no other requests to speak on this item.
Thank you. And we did receive the letter. Thanks. Okay, back to the council. Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you. I do have some concerns about the item before us today. If we were to pursue a CFD, I do support the project staff has identified to be included, the GPAs, mixed-use projects, the assisted living. However, I do have a concern that the fiscal impact, particularly the sections in the staff report, has not fully addressed in that staff report. There's no discussion of the number of units anticipated to be part of the CFD, how much money it's going to raise on an annual basis, and how that money is going to be allocated. From the numbers in here, looking at the Alta Vista project and just looking at the number of permits we've issued this last year, my back-of-the-napkin number is about half a million dollars a year. That's not enough to pay for a new battalion chief position. We've already had discussions about Measure X and the potential extension of that tax measure. In my opinion, Measure X has a broader appeal and has the potential to generate much more revenue than the proposed CFD, and it should be one, not both. My motion is to table any further action on the CFD until after the Measure X extension is decided.
Okay, there's a motion to table, I believe, that takes priority. Is there a second? I do not hear a second. Okay, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Quick questions for staff on this process. First and foremost, surrounding cities, including Carlsbad, have similar models with a lot of their development. A city like Oceanside, we're at a point in time where we cannot grow much bigger. We're going to be doing a lot more infill development, which means a lot more density, and we need those police and fire resources. And so I am really excited to look at the potential of implementing a process and pathway for future developments that meet criteria set by staff that will help, you know, it'll help facilitate the increased densities and population to ensure that we have the public safety infrastructure and personnel to accommodate them. I mean, that's what this is about. I know Arrowood, for example, which was one of the pioneering community facility districts in my district, they didn't have a public safety CFD. They had, you know, a landscaping CFD, they had for roads and infrastructure lighting, and it paved the way for some infrastructure improvements. But the nice thing about a public safety CFD, Community Facilities District, is it's ongoing perpetually to accommodate those calls for service that will continue to go on long after the infrastructure is built. So with that being said, how did staff come up to the conclusion of the 16-unit number? Where did that come from? Is there a neighboring city that does that? Or where did we go? I thought we were going to go down to like 10 or even five if the owner elected to do it, or if it was a condition.
It was based on a reading of the Fire Code, and that is a benchmark or a place at which different regulations and different requirements for the building go into place, and it's the 16 units. So that's what staff selected as the recommended threshold.
Okay. And is there an estimated, does staff have any idea, and again, this is a workshop to give direction so we can build on this, is there an idea of how many potential parcels or units could fall under the umbrella of this over the next decade or so of development, big development we have coming to the city of Oceanside?
I'm going to look to Deputy City Manager Jonathan Borrego for that.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, we are in the process, obviously, of updating the general plan update. As part of that process, we will be developing some more refined projections. I will tell you that, as an example, last year, which of course reflects development occurring under the current general plan, we issued about 563 residential building permits. I would imagine that that number is only going to increase as we move forward. As the City Council knows, a key feature of our pending general plan update is to incentivize additional residential development, particularly along our transit corridors. So, you know, I would say moving forward on a per-year basis, that 563 number could be very low, especially looking out over the next 10 years, when I would expect there to be a significant uptick in residential development based on the planning work that we're currently underway on.
Okay, very good. And is there, so this is the amount in this chart here of what, the percentage, so to speak, that we would be recommending to the developer as a part of, I mean, is there a set amount? We're going after a percentage amount, or is that still up for negotiation? How did you guys come up with this per unit?
Oh, the per unit? That was through the tax rate analysis. So I think I'm going to ask Andrea Ress to explain the methodology, if that's the question.
Yes.
Okay.
Good question.
Hi, thank you. Andrea Ress with DTA. And if you have, if you saw the analysis, what we did, as Michael described briefly, is we looked at number of calls, of police and fire calls. So we did the analysis separately for each police and fire, looked at the number of calls, currently allocated calls and costs based on actual usage, and number of the uses were sort of other and not allocated to a particular unit. So we focused just on those calls that were allocated to a particular unit and looked at the share of the city's budget. Looks like you're asking a question.
No, you're good. No, you're good. You're good. Yeah.
And so went through, came up with a cost per land use type for the single-family, for the multifamily, and then assisted living. We gave a credit for revenues that are coming in, as mentioned, based on the, sorry, I can't read the Prop 172 as well as the Measure X. We deducted those revenues, gave a credit for additional ad valorem taxes coming from the new units, and then used that to arrive at a tax for each land use for police and fire, and then added them together to come up with the total numbers that were presented.
Got it. Okay. So I think we need to continue this conversation, and I think it's going to need to be a part of the general plan to look at more, you know, umbrella forecasts of what, you know, the number of units we could expect to fall under this. Now, there is going to be, from what I see, the criteria, so all future development that fit that criteria, it's going to be a condition of the project to form a CFD, is that correct?
Yes, for projects that fit that criteria, that would be a condition.
And then there are developers who, you know, want to move forward on their own CFD, like we've seen in the past, and so, you know, that don't necessarily, I don't think they would fit under this umbrella. What's the option for them to, you know, create their own CFD? Is it going to go through the same process and, you know, adding in a public safety dynamic?
We might need more clarification on the question. Are you referring to projects that have already been approved that have been conditioned to annex into a CFD if one exists? For example, North River Farms is one of those.
So for example, one of the recent projects, like Howard Jacobs project right up here on Horn, that we've, you know, if he wanted to do a CFD for infrastructure requirements that were conditioned on the project, could he add in a CFD?
Well, we have, oh, I'm sorry. We have an existing council policy that governs how CFDs are established. And so, yes, for example, Arrowood, there was the Moro Hills CFD that was established, but that would require approval by the city council.
Okay.
And we'd have to go through the procedures that are set forth in one of the preceding slides. So, yeah, they could always request it, but it would be processed in accordance with the existing city council policy. We also have them for the Ocean Ranch Park as well.
Yes, okay, perfect. I don't have any questions. I would like to hear what other colleagues have to say.
Just to clarify, though, neither of those are for public safety services.
Correct.
Deputy Mayor Keim.
Just a quick question to follow up on what Councilmember Weiss and Councilmember Rodriguez said. Do we, so those numbers, the estimate of the 500 units, that's all development, that's not GPAs and the other, correct?
That's correct. But I would say that, you know, given past trends, the overwhelming majority of residential projects, at least in, you know, the time that I've been here, would fall within the criteria that we've established in the CFD. It's pretty rare that a project not exceed base density, as an example. Almost every project comes in either at or close to the maximum permitted density. And a good number of the residential projects that we're seeing these days are actually mixed-use projects on commercially zoned land, as we recently saw with the Coast Highway and Morse Project.
Okay. Is that, so, the way I had tried to calculate it roughly, it's not, so, what do we have, like 1,300 or 1,400 units out of our arena numbers that we have to rezone to make that work? Is that, so you think at 1,300 or 1,400 units to annex into this would be low?
Well, I mean, you know, as of right now, I believe that our, the remaining need that we've identified in our housing element is about 2,391 units. So moving forward, as far as our 2021 through 2029 arena allocation goes, we have a remaining need of about 2,391 units.
But those are with current zoning. I mean, so for GPAs, how much is it for that, do you know?
Well, I would imagine that, you know, most of, you know, under the housing element that's currently in process right now, that we're going to be bringing to council very shortly for final certification, in order to achieve those numbers, most of that can be done under the existing zoning scheme, although, you know, a portion of that would be picked up through our corridor plan that we're working on right now as well. So I'm not sure if I follow your question or not. But I would say that, you know, most of the units that we're going to be seeing down the road probably would not be requiring, requesting a general plan amendment, if that's the question.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Obviously, with all these additional units coming in, public safety is going to be more stressed, so we obviously need a lot more money for police and fire. Do we have the numbers for all new construction or multi-unit construction? Because we have a lot of single-family home lots that are being developed with four units, and that's going to bring in a lot of density as well? Or is this just 16 units and above?
This would apply as it, unless we receive direction otherwise. You know, this is just what staff's proposing, and council could certainly offer different direction. This would be development projects that are over 16 units and above and meet one of those other criteria. And so, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. So could we get the numbers for just any multi-unit project, whether it's four or above, and not just starting at 16? And that might lower this monthly base per unit price?
The way that DTA calculated it, that really wouldn't affect the overall rate, because they did it on, I guess, what you'd call it, a marginal basis. So it is, they calculated it based on that per-unit cost, regardless of if it was 16 or one unit.
Okay. It just seems strange to me that it's only projects over 16 units when there's a lot of other things going on that are bringing in more people in more condensed areas, not just the multi-unit projects.
Yes, and as I said, if that, you know, we could, you can offer direction other than that, too. So if that makes, that's just what we're, you know, we're proposing and recommending based on, it was based on conversations that we had with fire and police.
Okay. So the rates would not be affected, it would be the amount that would be generated?
Yes, correct, yes.
Did you have more questions?
Yeah. Does this interfere with Measure X at all? Or that funding, that funding just seems like it's a lot more sufficient than this. And I think that our, you know, people are going to say, well, if you have a CFD, why do you need Measure X?
So the Measure X is for enhanced services, so those, like, all of the Measure X services that we have were designed so that they could be scaled back in the event that a, when Measure X terminates, or if there's not a renewal of that sales tax. So for instance, we added a hot team when, with Measure X money. It wasn't, it didn't replace the existing funding or supplant the existing funding that was already going to that. Similarly, like, we enhanced the EMT program in fire, and that would be scaled back if there was not, if that funding didn't exist. So really, they're two separate things.
Okay.
One is for enhanced services, and one is to maintain that baseline level of, that is eroded over time, part due to Prop 13, as those revenues don't keep up with the cost of providing public safety services.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That's it. We have some other lights, but I want to go ahead and add some of my questions here at this point. So looking at assisted skilled nursing living units, I'm a little concerned about that. I don't know if they would actually be built if this happened. My concern is the chilling effect on affordable housing projects. So, for example, we, as, what is it, the Community Development Commission, I think it is, went ahead and approved funds for a new project, that was $3.5 million, housing funds for the affordable housing project near Apple Street. I forget what street it actually is on. And that is going to be X number of units, definitely more than 16. I think it was like maybe 60, was it? About 60. So this would apply to that project? It would not?
No.
Okay.
Yes.
Please, please reply to that.
Oh, sorry, our normal mayor.
Oh, my God, we're going to lose that project.
So residential units that are subject to a recorded affordability agreement with the city would be exempt from that CFD.
So with respect to the 26 units for the Alta Oceanside that are affordable, it would not apply to those units?
You are correct.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't see an actual, you know, black and white, these don't apply to affordable housing units.
I apologize if that was missing, but that isn't the case, yes.
I wasn't trying to read between the lines here. Okay. Councilmember Weiss.
So projects that are density bonus projects or other projects that do onsite affordable are not going to be subject to this. So the 1602 Morse Street would not be subject to it. The Seagate Project would not be subject to it. Any other project that has a density bonus application wouldn't be subject to, is that correct?
Only the, only those units. So if it's a 100-unit project, 20 of them are affordable, those 20 units would not receive that CFD charge, correct?
But the balance would.
The balance would. The remaining 80 would.
The market rate units will be subsidizing the calls for service for the affordable units.
Essentially, yes, but the charge wouldn't go up. They wouldn't absorb.
Right.
Yeah.
Councilmember Rodriguez? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Weiss, don't. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yeah, it's, I mean, that's, I agree with the questioning of Councilmember Weiss. You know, when we have affordable units in a 100-unit building, the other units are subsidizing the whole thing, you know, from the cost to the, just every portion of it. So really quick, on these, this tax revenue, is it just going to go into our general fund? It can't be earmarked, correct? So, you know, I would like to know, what is the city going to do with this additional revenue, other than create additional revenue?
This is special tax money, so it's subject to the, typically, normally, a special tax would be subject to 2/3 voter approval. Typically, in a Melrose district, it's a landowner election. The landowner would vote to approve it. But no, the money is earmarked for the specific purposes.
Okay, so it would just be earmarked, and then it would go toward, if you can elaborate a little more on, you know, is it personnel? Is it going to go toward pension, unfunded pension liability? Is it going to go toward a new fire truck, you know, just for the public? Like, what is the ideas of staff on where this funding would go toward?
Well, the monies would go into a, first, as John mentioned, they would go into a special revenue fund that we would be able to account specifically for those monies. As far as earmark into a specific thing without council direction that would just go to overall costs of maintaining that level of service for police and fire.
Just additional funding for our public safety.
But it is important to note, as I put in the analysis, it cannot, that money cannot replace or supplant existing services. So you can't cut back, you know, the general fund that's paying for that service. This would have to supplant it.
Got it. So if there was no new Measure X, and we could use this toward continuing our EMT service, for example, correct? Is that kind of what the example you're giving, or the hot team, you know, like?
Yes. So we have existing services. I think the underlying rationale of this report is that there's a marginal cost associated with extending the existing services to new development. It's already at a deficit, so you're basically imposing a special tax to cover that loss.
Got it. Good to go. In my experience with, speaking with, you know, a ton of the developers that have come in and out of our city that are looking at different, you know, projects, I've brought up CFDs to them. I've had detailed conversations, and every one of them were like, yeah, we're fine with it. We want to mitigate, you know, the impacts with respect to public safety. They, you know, if they go to Carlsbad, they know, you know, if you're building in a certain area, or you're going to do a development, they're going to want a CFD. So it's something that they're becoming more and more used to, and they want to help mitigate public safety. And so I don't see, you know, in particular, developers here, you know, asking or giving feedback outside the BIA, which, you know, I understand their perspective. But I'm definitely wanting to move forward on continuing this conversation and looking for additional revenues in partnership with the private sector to help facilitate our public safety sector.
Is that your motion to direct staff to develop the ordinance and other materials necessary to form a public safety service facilities district?
Yes, and when it comes back before council, if we could fill in some of the gaps that my colleagues have obviously brought forth. But yes, that would be my motion.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and second his motion. We have fallen behind, and the original creators of Oceanside, our, whatever, forefathers and mothers, whatever, probably didn't anticipate the tremendous densities that our cities would be experiencing, certainly not things like Prop 13 or anything like that, right? So it is really new development that comes in, or when something is sold, that the tax base is then raised. But even with that happening in Oceanside, we're becoming a more popular place, we're still so very, very behind. And this really is about providing, being able, actually, being able to provide services. We're not talking about, you know, somehow creating a higher level of service in terms of quality. We're really talking about basics and being able to continue and to respond to all these increased calls. This is a tool that apparently is being successful by other cities, used by other cities. My concern, as you heard, was about affordability. We do continue to have these requirements by the state to develop and actually build affordable housing within all the categories. And if this were to apply to affordable housing, that probably wouldn't be able to be done. Yes, developers probably will be passing on the cost to homeowners, or, I don't know, I guess renters. But I just don't see any other way. As we go through this, we have another two hearings. I encourage all of us to think about all the questions and certainly, you know, get into the dialogue with the public. But I do think that this is a viable way of ensuring that we are able to continue to provide this minimum. And I think for all of us, we know we have a five-minute response call goal, which is probably much higher at this point, right? So this is very, very critical. I see no other lights. Please vote.
Motion approved for one. Weiss, no.
Thank you. We are now on item number two, which is public communication on city matters that are not on the agenda. Do we have any requests to speak?
We have no requests to speak on that item.
Thank you. Then this meeting is adjourned to a regular scheduled meeting of March 9, 2022, 3:30 for closed session. Thank you.